8:00 PM.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here and welcome to the regular board meeting for Adelanto Elementary School District. Today is April the 23rd, 2024. The time is 5:30. This meeting is being called to order. Mrs. LeVey, would you please take role?
Trustee Benz?
Present.
Trustee Turner?
Turner, present.
Trustee Soto is running behind and Trustee Webster is out today. Trustee LaFrench?
LaFrench, present. Quorum has been established. Would everyone please stand and place your right hand over your heart? Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Section two, adoption of the agenda. Ms. LeVey, do we have any proposed additions, deletions, and adjustment in the order of business?
Madam President, we do. Item 12.05. The agenda in itself is correct, but the attachment was not correct. That's Resolution 232431, adopted April 23rd, 2024. Those changes will be done.
Thank you. Section 2.02, adoption of the agenda. Trustees, I need a motion to adopt the agenda.
Benz, I mo- motion to to adopt.
Trustee Turner, I second.
Ms. LeVey, please take the vote.
Trustee Turner?
Turner, aye.
Trustee Benz?
Benz, aye.
Trustee LaFrench?
LaFrench, aye. Motion passed 3-0. Moving on to section three, cabinet reports.
Thank you, Trustee LeVey. Thank you so much, audience. So, some very exciting news here in Adelanto. Currently, our enrollment is 7,691 students present today. 7,253 students for a percentage of 94.31. Our current vacancy rate is 10 vacancies. And within that, five of those are special education. If we account for all of our vacancies in our certificated side, we're talking a 2.5% ratio, which is extremely low. We take out our special education, which the entire state is having challenges with special education hiring. We're down to just a mere 1.25% vacancy rate. Some highlights for our district. Wanted to recognize Melva Davis. Their team won first place in a recent competition. And in addition to that, Melva Davis Cheer won second place at the Knott's Berry Farm Performance. We also had from El Mirage Future Business Leaders of America. We had an extremely positive turnout in that competition, in which we had several students placing. In addition to that, we had three students qualifying for national, the National Leadership Conference. So, we're extremely proud of our students. And upcoming are some of the past events that have happened here in Adelanto. We had our El Mirage Purple Diesel School Painting Day. I had the opportunity to visit West Side Park and was extremely impressed with the level of instruction that was taking place throughout every single classroom. High levels of engagement, students interacting with their teachers, purposeful utilization of technology. It was an incredible visit. George Magnet Gamers Read for Family Event Night occurred, as well as the West Creek Literacy Night, Melva Davis Synergy Day. We also had the George Magnet Performing Perfect Attendance Student Celebration with VIP seating, pizza prizes, hula hoops, jump roping, and then our Morgan Kincaid Talent Show. In addition to that, the annual San Bernardino County Career Expo. Want to thank our hiring team that attended that event, making contacts in regards to recruitment efforts. We did something a little bit differently in which we are projecting out based on historic trends, our historic vacancy rates that we're anticipating, which we're anticipating at 15. We've already hired 11 of those 15 right now, and it's only in April. So, I want to thank the entire teams that were involved in that. Upcoming events, we have a lot of celebrations and a lot of appreciations. Bus Driver Appreciation Day. We definitely want to thank our bus drivers. Our Administrative Assistance Day is coming up tomorrow. George Magnet Annual Family Poetry Night, our Ted Vick Family Arts and Literacy Night, School Nutrition Employee Week, our English Learner Reclassification Ceremony at Gus Franklin is coming up, as well as our National Association of School Nurses Day. Cannot forget California Day of the Teachers, as well as our District Writing and Arts Fair at George White. So, a couple of pieces I wanted to acknowledge for Administrative Professionals Day. I want to thank all of our administrative professionals out there for your hard work, resilience, and your can-do attitude inspiring us all. Today, we salute you for your invaluable contributions and your bright sunny vibes you bring to our workday. Cheers to you and all that you do. Also, for all of our staff, teachers, classified nutrition bus drivers and nurses, today, let's raise our voices in celebration of the unsung heroes who keep our educational institution thriving. Our incredible bus drivers, our teachers, our nutrition staff, our nurses, and our classified staff, from ensuring safe journeys to and from school, to providing nourishing meals, tending to healthcare needs, and supporting daily operations. Each one of you plays an indispensable role in shaping the educational experience for our students. Your dedication, compassion, and expertise make a world of difference in the lives of our students, our colleagues, and our families alike. Today, we honor your tireless commitment and send a resounding thank you for all that you do to make our schools vibrant communities of learning and growth. The other call out I wanted to mention, I want to thank all of our Mesa Linda staff. As you may be aware, we recently encountered a situation in the community that required swift action and diligence to ensure the safety of our students' well-being and staff. So, I want to take a moment to express my gratitude for all those involved in responding to this incident. First and foremost, I extend my sincerest appreciation to Principal Turnipseed and Mr. Forbes for their prompt response and effective implementation of safety protocols. Their quick action and commitment to ensuring safety of our students and staff is highly commendable. Additionally, I'd like to extend our thanks to Ms. Gonzalez, Dr. Dwyson, her team, as well as Blue Knight for their immediate support and assistance. Their dedication and willingness to lend a helping hand in ensuring the campus safety is greatly appreciated. Through collaborative efforts of individuals like them, we can navigate challenges and situations successfully. Want to also, you know, doubling my extension of thanks to the staff and working with with Principal Turnipseed to be able to continually and ongoing analyze the safety measures that are taking place at the school so that we continually identify what can we do better and what can we do to make us all of our environments safer. I'm grateful for each of you, and I want to thank you for your ongoing efforts and dedication. So, that is my report for today, and I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Dwyson next, please.
All right. Good evening, President LaFrench, Board of Trustees, our AESD staff and community. I am honored to share some highlights on behalf of academic services. So, just a reminder, registration for summer school is still open. That closes on May 17. You can sign up at your child's school or electronically through Parents' Word. We look forward to sharing a short update this evening about summer school. AESD is still in our testing window. That again goes until May 17. Parents, please continue to help us during the testing season by helping your children be at school daily, get plenty of rest, and sharing a growth mindset and positivity with our students. Our special education team welcomed our new coordinator, Dr. Best. She has jumped in to support our special education team and is already Selpa meetings, school visits, meetings with staff. We're just very thankful for her, and we look forward to positive changes in our department. Last week, on April 16th, we had parent representatives and our Family Education Center Community Liaison. Isela Chavez attended the California Association for Bilingual Education Parent and Educator, Para-Educator Regional Conference, and they had a great time and are bringing back that information to our next D-LAC meeting. We have our, Dr. Albert already mentioned, but our English Learner Reclassification Ceremony will occur on May 2nd. That'll be from 5:30 to 7:30 at Gus Franklin. This year, where we are going to be reclassifying 77 students district-wide, which is an increase from last year's total of 66. So, this is a, yes, let's give them a round. This is a tremendous honor and accomplishment, and we cannot wait to celebrate our students. And lastly, we do have the Writing and Art Fair, which will be held at Braddock from 4:00 to 5:30 on May 23rd. So, we look forward to this event, and we showcase our student authors. If you've not been to one of these, there's surely a site to see where students have their books made and bound, and they're up for display. So, we look forward to that celebration as well. And with that, that concludes our comments for academic services.
Thank you, and we're going to turn it over to Ms. Gonzalez for our business services.
Thank you. Thank you. Good evening, Board of Trustees, Cabinet, and our community. It's always a pleasure to serve our district. Today is Bus Driver Appreciation Day, as Dr. Albert had mentioned. I just want to say a sincere thank you to all of our drivers that are out there. It is a pleasure to have you serve here and providing transportation to our students every single day. I know yesterday you guys had an in-service, and today your transportation supervisor was out there giving plenty of gratitude to you. So, again, thank you for all that you do. I want to provide a shout out to our nutrition services for providing over 1,366,000 meals to our student as of March 29th. That is like, can we please give them a round of applause? That is just absolutely amazing to provide all of those meals to our students every day. That's lunch, breakfast, and sometimes supper, and they're just going to continue to do an awesome job. I know they're in planning for next year and as well as summer school. On April 9th, most of our fiscal team was able to attend the CASBO Conference and get some really good information. They were able to connect with their business and fiscal colleagues, listen to presentations on budget expectations, trends, and things to come. As always, we continue to monitor the budget situation. Some of the key highlights that are starting to come out are already has, they are talking about some of the facilities. They're talking about pre-K, but we won't know all of the information until our May revise. Our fiscal team is also already began preparing for the adopted budget. We already started working with our site admin in the current year, looking at next year. And lastly, it's always a pleasure serving our district, and thank you.
Thank you very much for those reports. Moving on to section four, staff reports and presentations. 4.01. Mr. Albert?
All right, 4.01, District History Day and Science Fair winners. So, at this particular time, I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Dwyson to introduce her team to be able to review the the History Day and Science Fair winners.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Can you, is it on? Okay. Good evening, everyone. So, this evening, we do have some very special awards to present. We have some for science and also for history day, so we are excited to present those. Beside me are two of our fabulous team members. We have Carol Coburn, our Director of Academic Services. And we do have Rebecca Pykoski, our Coordinator in Academic Services.
All right. Good evening, trustees.
So, as we do these, if you'd like to come forward, and we'll pass out the awards at this time.
Yes, thank you. Okay. That works. We're just waiting. All right. On March 14th, four of our students participated in the San Bernardino County Science Fair. I would like to recognize our first bronze level winner from Gus Franklin, Amber Moreno. Next, we had three participants from Columbia Middle School. The first one is Sierra Dryton. Next, we have Ivan Ferragino. We are super excited to announce that one of our students was honored with the Department of Defense Leadership Award. This prize consists of $100 and a certificate acknowledging the middle school student or team that demonstrate excellence in STEM, as well as problem-solving skills and determination to overcome challenges throughout the research project. We are very proud to announce our Defense, Department of French Defense Leadership Award winner, Aldo Liel. Congratulations. All right. On March 2nd, our students from 4th through 8th grade from Victoria McGathen and Melva Davis competed in the County History Day Competition. We had 12 students from Victoria McGathen and four students from Melva Davis who qualified for our state competition that just took place this past weekend. I'm going to go ahead and first announce our, we had a group project. Sorry, I didn't organize it. A group poster project for, they got runners-up. This is Ezekiel Cifuentes, Damian Garcia, and Sebastian Salazar. And their project was the light bulb. And that was a poster. Awesome. We also had runners-up in the elementary group podcast. Stay up here, please. I'm sorry. We're going to take a group picture at the end. Thank you. And Aldo Liel, come back up, please. Thank you. So, for the group podcasts, they got runners-up, Victor Hernandez and Manuel Ramirez. All right. We want to go ahead and acknowledge Malia Caldwell. Malia Caldwell? Desiree Nye? Liliana Baldarama? Arabella Stevens? Victor Hernandez? Janessa Armstrong? Maya Guerrero? Sophia Torres? Adeline Zendejas? Ofilia Stalski? Giselle Mesa? Ivan Agiri? We would also like to acknowledge our chaperones and teachers that dedicated their time to go all the way to Sacramento with our students. That's Stephanie Gordon? Malia Johnson? Jodette Griffiths? And Ruby Sandoval? Our final acknowledgement comes to our additional chaperones, which are all the loving families that came. So, if you could stand up, all our parents that were here and going to History Day. Good job. All right.
Good job, everyone.
Right. Next up, we have item number 4.02, Alternative Programs, ISP and Hope Program. Like to reintroduce Dr. Dwyson and her team, who will be presenting about this amazing program.
All right. Good evening, President LaFrench, Board of Trustees, AESD staff and community. This evening, we'd like to give a presentation regarding some of our alternative programs. So, this evening, we want to talk about our Independent Study Program and also our Hope Scholars Program. These two programs are available in our district for students as some of our students need an alternative setting for learning. So, we're proud to present these this evening. Presenting alongside of me is our Director of Academic Services, Carol Coburn.
This one? Thank you and good evening. First, I would like to just explain our Independent Study Program. A lot of people aren't sure exactly what it is. So, an Independent Study Program is an educational program in which students work independently on a specific topic under the guidance of a teacher. The benefits of this program include flexibility for parents, personalization, so students can get that extra support if they need, or they can accelerate if they're if they're wanting to do that. They have an opportunity to go into depth on a topic that maybe they're really interested in so that they can research it further. And then also some creativity. So, you have to be pretty creative in how you deliver information and understanding in an independent study program. The key components of the program that make it successful is parent or guardian support. So, they are what is called the learning coach at home. The student needs to be self-motivated. Time management skills are learned or required and required for this because you really need to make sure that you're getting everything done on time. And then communication skills. So, you have to be able to really communicate with your teacher and with your family with with your needs, what you're understanding and maybe not understanding. Okay, now it's not letting me. Hang on one second. Okay. We offer two types of independent study programs in our district. A short term is a site-based program for students that are wanting to go maybe away for a few days. The parents can use up to 14 days total for a site-based independent study. A long-term independent study is someone who is wanting to be on it a little bit longer past that 14 days. So, anywhere from the 15 days till the end of the school year. The parents would express an interest in that, in this type of a setting for their students. They have to read the master agreement and sign, and then the student is issued the Chromebook, assigned the coursework given the teacher's schedule so that they can attend the sessions with the teacher. Parents can request to return to a campus in-person setting at any time. And also, students in the Independent Study Program are only in that program till the end of the school year, and then they have to re-sign up for the next school year. In order to be eligible and accepted, we do look at a few things. First, the student needs to be enrolled in AESD schools and be a resident of San Bernardino County or a county immediately adjacent to our county. When the interest form comes in, we look at the student's attendance. And so, 95% or higher is what we're looking for. But students with a 90 to 94% attendance can be in the program on a contract, you know, and given an opportunity to show us that they they can do it. We also look at their grades. So, your student needs to be able to work independently, which means they're working at grade level with a pretty good understanding. So, we look at their grades to be threes or fours for the elementary students with only a few twos. And for our middle school students, we look for them to have As, Bs, or Cs in most of their core content work. And then the parent is notified of the acceptance. Once accepted, as I said, they begin attending that in-person learning with the teacher. The teacher has required amount of minutes that they have to meet for students. In kindergarten and through third grade, that's one hour per day per the state guidelines. And for grades four through eight, that is one hour per week for the state guidelines. Our teachers do meet more frequently than that with their classes. Being teachers, they want to make sure that the students are getting, you know, that extra support. They also meet with them individually during conference hours. And for our English learners, they're doing an additional 30 minutes per day to get, to give them the language development that they need. One of the conditions of the One of the conditions of the state is that our program needs to be substantially equivalent to the quantity and quality of the classroom instruction, and that all of the courses and materials that we use are standards-aligned. And so for our program, we're using Imagine Learning's Edgenuity for English Language Arts, Math, History, and Science. We also offer electives to our sixth through eighth grade class, and some of the electives that we have available are Spanish, 2D Studio Art, Coding, Digital Art Design, and Exploring Music, those have been the most popular ones. We also are using Imagine Language and Literacy for our English learners. And then for physical education, they compete, complete a weekly PE log. Attendance for independent study is calculated different than in-person, in-the-seat learning. So students, they complete classwork, and so the amount of classwork they complete contributes to the amount of attendance they get credit for. This also does include that Zoom class, so they need to be attending that class with the teacher every week. So the way that is calculated is if they complete 81 to 100% of the work and attending that Zoom class, they get five days of credit. 61 to 80, they get four days, 41 to 63 days, and so forth. So that does conclude my presentation on our Independent Study Program.
Alright, so at this time, we're very proud to introduce our Hope Scholars Program with our two fabulous teachers, Deborah Fernandez and Roma Flores. And Hope does stand for something, so many times we shorten programs because it's easy. But in this case, Hope, I want everybody to know that Hope stands for Hope, Opportunity, Positivity, and Empowerment. And each of those is so important for our students, all of our students as they enter our schools, but particularly in this program. So at this time, I'd like to turn it over.
Good evening, Board and members and community, thank you for having us. My name is Roma Flores.
And I'm Deborah Fernandez.
We're here to, we're here to present the Hope Scholars Program to you.
So what is the Hope Scholars Program? Our program is a second chance program that provides supportive, supportive small group environment with curriculum, instruction, guidance, and counseling, psychological services, and tutorial assistance to help students overcome barriers to learning. It's designed to support students who are irregular in attendance, need to unlearn and replace other negative behaviors, or unsuccessful academically due to behavior. Also, we've established it is due to trauma and other things. So the behavior is the, is that out of what we, when I say that behavior is like the, of what we see, of what's going on internally. Is the, yeah, sorry, I know what I meant to say. So Hope Scholars was created for students who are not working successfully in traditional school setting because of behavior. They learn better with one-on-one or small group instruction, need an alternative learning environment, react negatively in high-stress environments, have experienced incidents that have caused trauma to them, experience distracting behaviors that impact his or her ability to benefit from a traditional school setting. Who's eligible for the program? There's a referral process for him or for their homeschool. There should be documented multiple interventions, so like not just that we want a student out, that there's, they've done interventions to, that they work with the students, yeah, mitigate. School has held at least one parent conference prior to the decision to refer the student to Hope Scholars Program. So they're talking to this parent, they're not just assigning them a Hope Scholars, to go to Hope Scholars. Students must have multiple days of suspension, middle school, or have multiple behavior incidents that would have qualified for suspension, but the school assigned alternative consequences in lieu of suspension. It's a student and parent agree, student and parent agree and are willing to abide by all program expectations and requirements. To be transparent, we did the same thing when we were teachers at West Side Park with our students and our parents. We kept that relationship opening, open, so we would rather work with the parent. We kind of team up and we work as a family, so if you need, whatever needs to work, both sides of it, we work with that way. So we brought that to the school, and that's our expectations. A lot of times, by the, when the students are having behavior issues or things going on, it's really easy to like drop off a student, not think about what's going on. I was one of those students, so I understand that, so getting the parents to understand like how we, how can we make this better as a family unit? Okay, so our goals of the Hope Scholars Program. Hope Scholars is intended to provide students with a new start while teaching them skills needed to be successful in life and when they transition back to their homeschool. The point of the program is to give second chances, so like not giving a student is saying, I know you came from the school, and here's the behavior, and here's what I have about you. Literally, they get a second chance, they get to come into our program and start over again. Many of our students were failing their grades, and because the environment, they've changed, they have As and Bs. So we take in account of grades and behavior, everything. We start over again, so they don't have to bring whatever pattern of behavior or whatever cycle that they've been caught into. They get a chance to kind of breathe and start over again. So social-emotional learning is big at our school. Flores and I are both going to school right now currently. Our master's degrees in social-emotional learning with the Freedom Riders through that program, so a lot of what we're learning this year has really helped with that. It's based on my sort of practices, Freedom Rider lessons, we work with, as most of you guys know, we work with the Freedom Riders. So Freedom Rider lessons, working with Aaron Gruehl, different things that we can bring with the program. Social-emotional group lessons, weekly group meetings with Mr. Mike. I know there's been a demand, so we're hit and miss on some of those, but we're trying to do as many of those as we can. We do daily circle check-ins, and it's constant check-ins, so we're constantly asking how they are, just kind of emotionally if we see a change, but it's our whole school site, yeah.
One of the things that isn't on here that we do a lot of is relationship building, not just with our students, but also with the parents, like she stated earlier. We make it a really big point to really get to know the families as a unit, so that when there are clues that there's something going on, we can address it and try to figure out, you know, what's the root of this issue, how can we better support you?
A lot of the stuff we're working with is working with the parents too. Some of our parents also have been caught in the discipline cycle or things too, so like we're expecting them to be adults or go through everything, and they have, some of them have had their own trauma. So working with the family unit of how we can all navigate this system together. Academics at Hope, students work in Edgenuity classes with one-on-one tutoring as needed. Students must receive no less than 75% score on their work. This group, this was created with group expectations, we actually didn't create this. The students did, the first year when we had the program, it was kind of like, let's get the students to behave, and like, we don't know what else we're gonna do with them. And so we talked to the kids about like, here's the expectations, and like, like, if you're getting a second chance, what does that look like for you guys? Like, what do you want it to look like? Like, so academics was a big thing that they brought up. So like, they made it a thing, no less than 75%, and it goes every year that they've decided that these are academics, and for starting a second chance, this is the things we're doing too. Students work on daily IXL to fill in learning gaps and work on standards. Through IXL, the diagnostic, we can actually tell pretty much what grades the kids started getting placed out of, removed from their classes, because those are the grades and gaps they're missing. So based on a lot of the IXL diagnosis, we can kind of tell where the gaps are. Students are allowed to free seat when they're caught up in classes with grades 75% or higher, and are displaying positive behavior. We treat it kind of like a college environment, so you put into the environment what you get out of. So we all, as a unit, have to work that way. Students earn activities like working in the library, Fun Friday, or extra activities like nitro-type of board games. When they're on task, they have positive grades and progress on our meeting all expectations. So they have to have great, all three of those. Board games and stuff like that are a lot of the social-emotional learning, so learning like how to play games and get along when they're losing or winning or other ways. Anything, okay. So activities at Hope Scholars, so we realized that due to a lot of things, they don't necessarily get some of the same opportunities. So we like to do holidays, but they have to earn it. Anything that we do, we have to earn it, so there are things that we don't get. There are activities that we will not get if they don't work as a whole unit. So they have to learn to team up with each other, so they did earn. So last year, they didn't have carving pumpkins, this year they earned it. So one of the activities was carving pumpkins and participating in the Halloween activities. They actually weren't even sure if they were gonna earn it, so last minute, that's why they had the ears on, because they earned it and were excited and wanted a costume really quick. And we got to carve pumpkins, for many of them, they had never even, ever experienced that. So like watching them like carve the pumpkin and take all the guts out and stuff, it was really cool. We had a Christmas activity with them, so we bring a lot of family traditions, because we're a family. So we did sugar cookies with the students, we do it every year, we have a sugar cookie decorating contest. So we get together with our staff and with everybody, and we decorate cookies, and we had a hot chocolate bar that they earned, so that was an addition that they got to earn this year. And they tried eggnog, yeah, so anything they haven't tried, pie, eggnog, things, we like to introduce them to those things. So anything that, family-wise, we can do. We have an amazing support staff that we heavily rely on. Ms. Jeanette is our proctor, Ms. Joanna is our secretary that is our absolute lifeline. All of them are. Miss Sarah is another proctor that we have, we share the two between the afternoon, so one comes in the morning, one comes in the afternoon, and they're there for breaks or extra stuff, we have a big group, so it's more the one-on-one. We have a probation officer, Officer Cunningham. He's only here as much because we're sharing him a little bit, but when we need him, he's there, and he does positive building relationships with our students. So anybody of authority who comes on our campus, it's all about building positive relationships, because we want the community to see our students in a positive manner. We want the students to see them in a positive manner, so that they always don't have to have those negative. So like people, some of our students who have seen him in a negative context come into our school and are like, oh, you're gonna build a puzzle with us and do things. Um, so the next one is, we have an outside support from Deputy Jones and the San Diego County Sheriff's. So this year, he bought pizza and did a talk with our students. Last year, he nominated us, and we won the Shine the Light Award for San Diego County, and he did, they did a $1,000 shopping spree and bought our students like stuff that we wanted for the, they gave us a list of like the things that we wanted for free seating or things that, outside of the box, and so they did a shopping spree and brought him and the officers. So we were really lucky to work with the Freedom Riders in person this year and got to attend Columbia. So Aaron's been working like kind of online, but hadn't actually seen them in person. All of our students got a book, and we got to work with one of the authors and like our own little separate thing. And it was just, it was a really big one, the kids were really into like reading and, and and we actually just got a copy of some of the books given to us from one of the Freedom Rider parents to give to our students for our new Freedom Rider book. So we wanted to share, this is one of our students, Art, and he's been with our program for about a little over a year, year and a half. And so we invited some of our students to come and speak about the program. It is really easy for us to say that it works, it's really easy for someone else to say it, but I feel it's more impactful if you hear from the students, students and, and so, he's shy, but um, yeah. You can tell, yeah, so. Just tell them a little bit about, about Hope and why, why you're here and what you like about it. Take your time.
Alright, my name is Arturo, and then some things I have learned at Hope are breathing exercises, eye statement, how to control my emotions, how to control reactions, and how to meet expectations. And I like Hope because I have best friend and two cool teachers.
Two cool teachers, alright.
That's it.
Thank you.
Arturo is actually one of like our breathing exercise leaders, like he's, he very much believes in it, and he's really kind of taken those breathing exercises, and he even reminds us like, hey, Ms. Flores, do your breathing exercises? It's, he's kind of been the pioneer on that to the point where he's willing to teach the other students how to do it too.
Yeah, so, and he understands the program, we have our good days and our bad days, but he knows that we're family at the end of the day, and so, so he's just doing amazing and getting his grades up. So we're really, we're just really proud of him.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So Board, that does conclude our presentation on alternative programs here, offered here in Adelanto Elementary School District.
Thank you.
Right, and next we have everything you wanted to ever know about our exciting summer school, and we're so excited for the opportunities that our students are gonna have this coming up summer. So I'd like to turn it back to Dr. Dwyson to go over our summer school.
Alright, thank you so much. So very quickly, we're just gonna give a brief overview of our summer school program. We're very excited about this program, and I'd like to say this is a really an all-in creation. So while there's a lot that happens behind the scenes, our teachers, our administrators, our business services, our human resources, everybody works together to make this happen for our students. And it's, if you come and visit, it's really a great opportunity to just see how everybody works together, and it's an excellent program. So if parents are watching or in the audience, please sign your children up. This is a great program to have your children participate in. So in the program, you actually, we wanted to make sure that we had the opportunity to really hit academics. So you will have your reading, your math, and then additionally, we, what makes it stand out from the regular school year is that we're adding in those extra enrichment opportunities throughout the day. So we do have STEM, we have art, we have theme days to make it fun, our administrators help us out with that. We do have physical education, and we do make sure that we incorporate, actually, we want to thank the Board, because you've already approved some of our field trips that we will be taking during the summer, and assemblies. So it's important that we bring those opportunities in, we want to make sure kids know this is gonna be fun, they want to be here every day that they're here. Additionally, we have opportunities for social-emotional learning and daily living skills. And then additionally, running at the same time as summer school is our ESY program, which is our extended school year program, and those are for our students who need that, students who have an IEP, who need additional time for learning during the summer. So at this time, I do want to close, have Ms. Coburn close it out.
So just real quickly, a summer enrichment camp will run June 5th to the 28th of this school year. We do serve breakfast and lunch, and then have our instructional program time between 8:00 and 12:00. After-school program is available for students that want to stay, and I encourage students to stay, because they do a lot of fun additional enrichment activities in the afternoon. And to help support our families up here, after-school program does offer until 6:00 PM for working parents. So we do have busing that takes students to school in the morning, and then the, our bus goes home at 3:00 PM, so that our students can stay for that after-school enrichment as well. Our ESY will run June 5th through July 3rd, which is 20 days. They will eat breakfast together at 8:00, and then their program concludes at 12:00. They eat lunch all together around 11:00 as well. Registration, as Dr. Dwyson said, for summer enrichment camp is online through Parent Square or paper registration at the school sites, and parents and families, you will be getting that home this week. Every student, we're gonna send an application home with, as well as a flyer. Registration for our ESY program is through your IEP team meeting. Locations this year for our summer enrichment camp, so our elementary will be held at West Side Park, Victoria McGathen, Gus Franklin, and Eagle Ranch. Our middle school location is Columbia Middle School. Our ESY will be at West Creek for Elementary and Melva Davis Academy of Excellence for Middle School. We have fully staffed our summer school. I want to thank Jennifer Rader and Brian Hahn for their assistance in helping to assign teachers, so it made it a lot easier for us to go through that process. But we have a full array of administrators, counselors, teachers, proctors, and security guards, paraprofessionals. So we have fully staffed the campus to meet the needs of our students. Our after-school program this year, we're gonna offer two different ones, Action Youth America and Millionaire Mind Kids. After, Action Youth America will offer sports, STEM, cheer, culture, and traditions. Um, afters, Action Youth America will offer sports, STEM, cheer, culture and traditions. Um, our Millionaire Mind Kids will offer the STEM, the robotics and then engineering. Um, so we're excited to see this program um take place and I know that um from talking with many teachers, they enjoy doing this. Um, so it's it's fun to come to work and do uh the things that maybe you can't do during the regular school year.
Okay, and that concludes our um presentation on um our summer enrichment camp. So we're happy to offer that.
Thank you very much. We appreciate the house updates. Thank you.
Moving on to section five, closed session. Declaration will be taken items 5.02 through 5.04 into closed session. Section six, public testimony before closed session. The public comment period is administered by state law and is the point in the meeting set aside for members of the public to share their opinions with the board. Open meeting laws do not permit the board to engage in dialogue or answer questions. Any person who wishes to address the governing board on closed session agenda items only must complete and submit an A E- A E S D speaker request form five minutes before the meeting is called to order. Public comments will only be taken on agenda items during the discussion of those items. The board values public comments and although the Board of Trustees cannot take action or discuss items not on the agenda, the Board of Trustees listen carefully and appreciate input from the public. Additionally, a public speaker can be cut off for exceeding the allotted time or for willfully causing an actual disruption to the meeting. Before cutting a person off or removing someone, the board will give at least one clear warning. If you were cut off or warned last time, please consider that your warning. Individual speakers are allowed three minutes to address the board on each closed session agenda item. The board limits the total time for public input on each item to 20 minutes. With board consent, the president may increase or decrease the time allowed for public presentations depending on the topic and the number of persons wishing to be heard. The president may take a poll of speakers for or against a particular issue and may ask that additional person speak only if they have something new to add. Moving right along to 6.01. Oh, one, do we have any speakers uh for ADTA?
That's 6.02.
6.02.
Madam President, the board calls Jennifer Reader from ADTA.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Board, Cabinet, members of the public. I stand before you tonight with a heavy heart. It seems I've said those words before. Despite the resolution you you have coming up in the agenda, agenda item 12.05, it is clear with your actions that you do not value the teachers who work here. I'm exhausted of having to explain to you all that we deal with, with our overburdened teachers, jam packed classes, many daily rough behavior problems and constant interruptions to our teaching and an ever increasing load of responsibilities and expectations from the district. You don't listen. Perhaps you will listen tonight as the auditor presents to you what we have been saying. The district has several areas where money is being diverted away from the educators and students of this district. Shining a light on our finances and revealing the inconsistencies is providing proof that the district has the wrong priorities. You have to prioritize our students, students' safety, student achievement, students' education over your own conferences, your own travel, your own security. Money needs to be spent in the classroom on the classroom teachers. Our share of the new 6.966% LCFF money coming in, it's 104 million, would easily grant us a 7% raise and not even touch the reserves. There are still S R monies that need to be spent now. There are so many different pots of money coming into the district. It's far too easy to fudge numbers and massage the facts. It is an environment that almost invites corruption, but now we have a mediator involved and all will be revealed. Here are some of the, thank you, here are some of the expenditures that make us wonder at the professed transparency of the district. These are in the 12.13 warrants and purchase orders category. Construction project manager for, I'm assuming the pool, is getting $100,000. If this is not for the swimming pool project, then you need to enlighten us on what major construction is being done. $48,000 for a basketball assembly that was meant to deliver a message two weeks, two weeks before testing began. And honestly, they were terrible. All they did was chant stop, think, act, and we're better together with no coping skills or behavior strategies offered at all, just shooting baskets and giving a few kids some nice prizes. But unfortunately, teachers were left to console the younger children who were not recipients. To make matters worse, the main ball player was marching up and down the court with his pants sagging below his bottom. Who booked this group? Who do they know here at the district office? How did we get this group? I understand that the district canceled the remaining engagements of this group. I can only imagine this is due to negative reviews. How much of that 48,000 will be returned to the district? $800 for custom lapel pins. And money for A E S D apparel. Um, trustee LaFrenche, that's a lovely blazer. This may seem petty, but really money is money. And if our budget is getting as tight as your zero offer suggests, then it is time to tighten all the purse strings. $61,000 for two blue light security at the D O from 7:30 in the morning to 4:30 PM. What exactly do you anticipate happening here? Meanwhile, Mesa Linda and Columbia desperately need the security assistance. We really need SROs, but you discontinued the contracts with Victorville and Addonti Police Departments. Students are running wild on Mesa Linda campus. They cuss out the security, they ignore teachers and administrators. Some kids haven't been to class all year. The kids who want to come and get an education do not feel safe there. The teachers do not feel safe there. There are blue light security guards in the parking lot who don't come on campus, but cars are still being broken into. What would really be wonderful to see at Mesa Linda is the Hope program, like Columbia has. This fabulous program should be expanded and duplicated. It would benefit students. That is our aim after all, isn't it? You hired our new CBO and then you hired someone else full time to train her to the tune of $60,000. After such a long and exhaustive search, I would like to think that the candidate was fully capable of doing her job. She's new, though. You might have to look into the past to see where the incompetence lies. And now we have another vacant seat on our cabinet. As Dr. Albert tries to wear two hats, we're back in the merry go round as before. I was shocked and dismayed to learn that although Melva Davis again is being honored, now this is actually not the shock. I'm very happy to learn that Melva Davis is again being honored with the Calipari distinguished schools award, but I was shocked and dismayed to learn that although that is happening, only you, the board, will be attending, not the teachers. And it happens to be at the Disneyland mo- uh hotel May 2nd through the 4th. I know it's all about the photo op, but seriously, the teachers carry this one. Being in Anaheim, it's local, so you could drive to it. I wonder, though, if you'll be staying over at that very fancy, very expensive hotel instead of our teachers who are the ones who deserve to be there. So so none of our teachers are going along, really? The teachers are the ones who make this happen. The teachers under the leadership of Mrs. Yuskovich. And this is the weekend before the week of teacher appreciation. The irony is just to stack up. I see a board resolution for teacher appreciation, item 12.05, and your actions speak louder than your words. That 0% that is still the district's offer is a pay cut, especially in light of the rising uh insurance costs and terrible inflation. So you really think we are worth nothing, less than nothing? When you tell us with your words how you appreciate us, but then agree to the district's salary assessment, you're lying to someone, us or them? Teachers are frustrated and quite honestly hurt. No, no, we're furious at this treatment of us. We would rather be in our classes doing what we are trained and educated to do. Instead, we, our bargaining team, have to be negotiators and consultants and financial auditors and investigators, all while having substitutes in our classes. Let's talk about agenda item 14.01 on the audit report. We have major concerns about two audit reports in a row that have major discrepancies, 16 altogether. We have major concerns about the auditing company being fired after reporting findings that raised questions, only to be yeah, that was last year, only to be replaced by another company who is again raising questions. Will they likewise be shown the door and will you seek yet another company to hire until they tell you what you want to hear? Ask these questions of the district. We have given you numbers in the past that this, the district argued were false. And now the audit report confirms what we were concerned with all along. We desperately need a fiscal health risk analysis to be done. This is um F E C M A T, Fiscal Crisis and Management Assistant Team. They do these, we've, we had one done uh about 15 years ago. We desperately need a fiscal health risk analysis to be done. This agency does their own audit on the internal controls and we can get recommendations for how to fix the problems. School services is not neutral. They have their own reasons for wanting to paint a doom and gloom picture of the finances. You are the elected officials. You have the public's trust of the schools in Adelanto. That is why you are termed trustees. You've been given governance classes, you've been given reports that are detailed and complex. Do your job. Run this district. You have the reins. You are driving that proverbial bus. Thank you.
Madam President, we call Diane Lynn.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam President, LaFrenche, trustees, cabinet, all of the classified staff here, all of our ADTA members, everyone else in the audience, everyone in Zoom land, thank you for being here tonight. As you all know, our district was given, was granted an 8.22 cost of living increase at the beginning of the school year. The 8.22% equates to a little over $7 million. I understand that the district can put that, place that money wherever they want, and it's unfortunate that you have not considered staff. As staff, we enjoy being acknowledged, appreciated, and know that our district is looking out for our economic well being. We are not feeling this. Before I continue, I have uh some information on what our negoti- what our neighboring districts have negotiated for classified, so. We'll start with Victor Valley Union High School District. They have finished negotiations for the 2324 school year and they have received 5% on their sal- scheduled salary increase. Their cap, and this is yearly, is $18,202. Barstow Unified School District for the 2324 school year um are receiving for, this is for classified, 7,000 on schedule salary increase and 4% off schedule. They have here uh tiered rates for their family employee for health and welfare. Hisparia School District for the 2324 school year. They are receiving 9.22 on schedule salary increase. And again, I know health and welfare is hard to determine for all of our districts, but there's their, theirs is there. Um, Silver Valley Unified School District, 2324 school year, they're receiving a 5% on scheduled salary increase. Hellendale School District, 2324, 9% on schedule salary increase. Hellendale, 2324, 9% on schedule salary increase. Apple Valley Unified School District, and this is pending verification, 1.5% on schedule salary increase. Victor Valley uh Elementary School District has not settled yet and uh neither has Snowline, neither has Adelanto. Unfortunately, we're at the bottom of the list, not only on this page, but also for compensation for all of our members here, ADTA and CSCA. You know, the other day, um we went grocery shopping. I usually go to Vons. I decided to try and save some money, so we decided to go to food for more. I say that because I had six bags of groceries, six bags. They're not very big. They're they're grocery bags. And it, the total came out to a tune of $236. My family, we are very fortunate that we can afford these costs at this time. We have several classified employees who are single. I have already heard from different employees that they cannot afford the rising cost of insurance and they're going to have to go to Medi-Cal. Medi-Cal is given to employees who are under underpaid. That is sad. Very sad. I don't know who's responsible and who has the authority to give us increases, but I really, we would really want you to look, look around. A lot of these employees here are full time, they're mainly teachers, but our classified staff, we are not. So please find out, look out, watch your budgets and see, I'm pretty sure I think we could understand if we were in deficit for our budgets or not. I think we could understand if we didn't have our 3% on reserve, we're not there. So it is sad for us to have to come to you and beg. We deserve this. We have several dedicated employees here. I can speak for myself. I've been here for 26 years. I will be ending my 27th year in June. In those years, I have, without any additional compensation, trained several clerks and secretaries in this district. I can name a few and I believe Mrs. Turner would be the only one that would recognize some of these names. But they are Donna Ula. They are Kim Brobst. Anna Kanto. Alvia Gomez. Shakira. And many employees who've come to us to train who are substitutes. I have heard them say, if you want to get trained correctly, go see Mrs. Lynn. I've done this on my own. We have several employees here who have done the same, both teachers and both support staff. We do this so that we can improve and help our district. We are here for the students. That's why we're still here. We love our students, we love our coworkers, and we love this district. That's why we're still here. We are dedicated and loyal. And for me personally, not getting an increase this year is not a slap in the face, it's a kick and you know where. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Madam President, the board calls Judith Phipps Gomez.
Hi, I'm uh Judith J- Phipps Gomez. I teach over at West Creek. And um before I get started, I'd like to thank you for bringing up literacy night that was at our school because I was in charge of that. And let me tell you, um, first of all, you're all my colleagues. They're my colleagues, but you are also my colleagues. We work together. We have a common goal. Our goal is to help these children to become their very best, to be good members of society so that when they grow up, they can be self sufficient, that they can be helpful to the world, that they are going to be that they are going to be better people because they were in our schools. That's our common goal. Because of that, all of these teachers have been working so hard. Right now is state testing. It's a tough time for teachers. I teach a two-three combo and my third graders, this is the first year of state testing, so of course they have to learn how to get into the state test on top of how to take the state test. And they have been working very hard. I'd like to thank Dr. Doisan for visiting my classroom this year. And I was able to show her all the thinking maps that I use in my class every day, that I've been using for years and years, every day. As a teacher, I am kind of, I guess, famous locally for project learning, for integrating subject matter. That's what I do. I started out years ago as a Girl Scout leader, many years ago. I served as a volunteer Girl Scout leader, camp director, council trainer of new leaders for over 30 years. So that's kind of what I'm about. But I just want to let you know that as colleagues, we're supposed to have mutual respect. We're also supposed to have collaboration. I teach my students collaboration. I hope that all of you work together to collaborate. You don't always have to agree. But one person's not going to have control and not have the other people, you know, getting their voice. Everybody's voice has to be heard. My most important thing is, I'm a taxpayer and I don't mind paying taxes because I'd much rather pay taxes than to live in a third-world country. We supply free public education to our children. So my problem is, is when you waste money. You take my money, that's fine, but please don't waste it. What I'd like to see at our school, I hope you'll give me just another minute.
Of course.
Is keep the class sizes low. Give the teachers something for cost of living because we pay bills just like you do. In fact, a lot of our money goes to our classes. We do. My school, we decided that it would be a good idea for, to, this is what the school district used to do. Before state testing, we gave medals and trophies to the children who had, at level or above, if they got advanced, they went home with the little trophy. Our school did that, we got that. Well, it wasn't the school district that paid for it. Okay? Try to figure out where that money came from. I also would really, really like to see the war teacher prep time and an intervention teacher. I used to serve as an intervention teacher, that was one of my previous jobs. I was an intervention teacher. That school district had an intervention teacher at each school site, which focused on language arts. I taught children how to read, I taught children how to read close, to do the close reading where they could answer questions based upon what they were reading. And also counselors, for goodness sake, I have students in my class that really, they're really troubled and they need counselors, but we don't have enough. So thank you so much for your time, my colleagues. Happy Teacher Appreciation Week that's coming up, we appreciate you.
Madam President, the board calls Siobhan Long.
Good evening, trustees, cabinet, AESD community of students, families, teachers, and staff. I'm Siobhan Long and I teach at Mesa Linda Middle School. Northwestern University School of Education has done extensive research and their findings show teacher quality matters for students' achievement. To get and retain the best teachers, a school district needs to pay them their due. This school year, the state of California allocated and paid AESD and every California school district an 8.22% cost of living increase for all teachers. AESD has received that money for this year and it will be ongoing every year. And yet, you are offering the AESD teachers 0%. At Mesa Linda, we lose about a quarter of our teachers every year. What a loss. We have these amazing teachers who go through the induction program that AESD pays for and then when they are fully qualified, we lose them to other districts. Why do you allow this to happen? Teacher quality matters for students' achievement. Yet we have quality teachers walking out the door because AESD is not competitive in salary. Let's talk about learning and working conditions at Mesa Linda. At Mesa Linda, we have a majority of amazing students and families. We do however, have a handful of students who are way out of balance and have great needs that cannot be catered to in the general classroom. We need an ongoing restorative intervention program so these students can get what they need and all other students have an uninterrupted learning environment. Equity for all our Mesa Linda students means that our students get what they need to succeed. Yes, such a program costs money. But we want you to spend today's money that you receive from Mesa Linda students on the Mesa Linda students we have right now. Spend the money on programs, not on armed guards.
Right.
A mind is a terrible thing to waste, but what a wonderful thing to invest in. To tell us that there are no available spaces at the Hope program is not acceptable. AESD needs to fund an onsite or district program so these students can also be successful. Our teachers cannot be expected to deal with extreme behavior issues in the classroom. When teachers are dealing with such extreme behaviors, day in and day out, the quality of instruction for all students diminishes. Teachers experience burnout and they leave. There go quality teachers walking out the Mesa Linda door. Thank you for listening.
Madam President, the board calls Thomas Herman.
Good evening, y'all. Most of you probably, matter of fact, probably all of you don't know me, but my name is Thomas Kerman. I'm here for one of our representative districts in the area, Hisparia Unified. Now you may wonder why somebody, why I would be here. Well, I served as president of Hisparia Teachers Association for 10 years, five years as lead negotiator. So I have a little background in kind of all of what's going on. I've seen impasse, fact-finding, pretty much everything you can throw at me. I've been through it, seen it, done it. And it's amazing to me as I come out here and I see very similarities between these districts. I know y'all get together and talk to each other. So when you see Maria Gomez, tell her I said hi, or Dave Olman, you can tell him I said hi. And you're pulling the same thing. We managed to be able, as you heard, our teachers and our classified and our management got 9.22%. And you know what? We're still there. We didn't go bankrupt because we got plenty of money, just as you did. You got plenty of money from the state and from the feds, we got it too. So it's there. It's a matter of priorities. You can serve all the platitudes. I know you gave a whole big shout-out to everybody at the district here and I get it, but it don't mean a thing if you don't back it up with your budget. And your budget tells us what your priorities are. That's where the rubber meets the road. And you know, it's interesting that they were bringing up the fact that, you know, losing staff members and that. One of the things that we hear a lot of blame for is the pandemic and what happened there. But every year since then, we've been losing more and more teachers, leaving districts, leaving the profession. They don't leave the profession, their main reason for it is not because of the students, it's not because of the parents, it's because of the lack of support. And we oftentimes think of lack of support as, okay, the admins at the site are not being supportive. You know what? Admin at the sites reflect leadership at the district office. 30 seconds. You are the leaders at this district office. What comes down from you is what is showing up at the sites. People are leaving because, I mean, you're going to tell them, you know, yeah, we're going to honor you and all, we're going to honor you because we think you're worth zero. Hey, you got it. It's up to you to make a decision to do it. You know, you can go and you can hide behind the mediator and that because you're going to let them make the decisions for you, but hey, that's all your choice. Thank you.
Madam President, the board calls Derek Marshall.
Hey, good morning, board. My name's Derek Marshall, I'm a resident of the High Desert, also nominee for Congress. And I'm speaking out today in support of the teachers. I bring up the Congress thing because we have a very atypical congressional district and we have a very atypical region. The size of the congressional district is the size of West Virginia. We sit on top of 10%, nearly 10% of California state legislature districts. We sit on top of all the High Desert cities, Apple Valley, Hisparia, Apple Valley, Barstow. We sit on top of Redlands. And so, you know, as a candidate for Congress and in running and building these relationships over the last three, four years, we've had a huge bird's eye view in the thousands of doors that we've knocked and talking to community members. And there's a couple of really important facts that I want to point out here. Number one is that we are the 13th fastest-growing region in the entire country. We have a lot of folks that are moving up here. 40% of the nation's goods and imports travel through the I-10 and the I-15 corridor. That means that we've got a lot of people that are coming up here. And so when I attend different school board meetings and when I attend different things, we really need to make sure that we are paying our people appropriately, especially if we want to do things like stop the brain drain out of the High Desert, if we want to make sure that our children are properly educated for all the types of jobs that are coming. Brightline West is building a $12 billion project. There's a call right now for 35,000 sheet metal workers and different types of trade workers. And guess what? A lot of that is going to be, is going to be, you know, metaphorically bussed in from outside of the district because we don't have proper education in place. And so I want to make sure that the 100,000 people that are traveling down the hill every single day, that they actually stay up here in the High Desert. And the way that we do that is by, you know, giving them and getting them into these jobs that are being invested in, whether it's the $1.5 billion Barstow trade port that's going to be going right up the road here in Barstow or the Brightline West bullet train, the redevelopment of the airport that we see, whether it's battery tech or renewable technology. So we know that we need to address a number of these concerns. Thank you very much for giving me a few moments of the time. I think it's really important. Cola, oh, last thing, I got 30 seconds. I was going to yield it back, but I'll read this instead of what COLA actually is intended for. And it's based on a formula that is calculated by the State Department of Finance, which determines the percentage amount of COLA funding that will be passed on to districts as a means of keeping salaries comparable and maintaining the ability. As the means of keeping salaries comparable and maintainability. I'll yield back the last five seconds, thank you very much. It's good to see you.
Madam President, the board calls Parker Dukes.
Sorry. Hello, my name is Parker Dukes. I'm a proud graduate of Adelanto Elementary School District. So all, so are all five of my siblings. You know, when I walk down the street, when I walk in the school, I fist bump the crossing guards, I see the security guards, I see teachers. So I know the school district pretty well, they know us pretty well. And I just wanted to talk about, you know, some of the positive experiences I've had with my teachers. So during my eighth grade year, my family went through a CPS case because some of my siblings have disabilities and so just being looked in on. And, you know, obviously that's a pretty traumatic time for, you know, an eighth grader. And I had a lot of teachers who allowed me to sit in their classes overtime just to like collect myself, you know, I was crying, so they let me, you know, calm down in their classes. You know, the teachers really care. I couldn't afford my eighth grade promotional trip, I forget what they call it, the trip to Six Flags when you graduate. I couldn't afford it, so because I had made such a great connection with some of my teachers and some of the custodians, the custodian actually offered to pay for me to go. And some of the teachers also pitched in. And so that just goes to show exactly how much our teachers and our educators care about the students that go there. They did similar things for all five of my siblings. You know, we had a cat that walked with us to school every day, they would watch our cat for us. And so, you know, they really care. And so it's really distressful for me to see them having to protest on 395 in Palmdale to get, you know, funding so they can be able to afford to live. You know, I've been looking for a job for two years. I now work at Victor Valley Union High School District as a coach. And so, it's very interesting to see, or very disheartening to see them have to protest on, you know, the side of major highways in order to get the funding that they need to be able to afford groceries and gas and all these other things that are raising. But yeah, I'm just here to speak in support of the teachers and, you know, just to address, you know, what Derek Marshall said. You know, the money's meant for teachers, it's meant to help them with the cost of living. And from what I understand, they're not getting any of it. So I would, I would like to see them get some of that money and not have to spend their time on the side of the street protesting. But yeah, that's, that's all, thank you.
Madam President, the board calls Priscilla Munoz.
Afternoon, AESD Board, teachers, sports staff, and parents. My name is Priscilla Munoz and as a lifelong resident of the High Desert, I've spent my entire life in High Desert schools. I've witnessed the hard work in the High Desert, the, I've witnessed the hard work teachers in the High Desert do and the sacrifices they've made for students like me. That's why I'm here to implore the school board to stop withholding the essential COLA funding that AESD teachers and support staff need to effectively do their jobs. I'd like to ask the school board to think back to when you were a little closer to my age and think of a teacher that changed your life. Unless you were homeschooled, I know there's at the very least one teacher that comes to your mind because that's just the impact that our educators have. They leave an imprint in all of us, giving us the tools to become functional members of society and inspiring us to create a better world for the one, than the one past generations have left us. Without the incredible work of teachers, the future of our children and the future of humanity would be lost. Which is why I'm here to ask the board, why are you treating your teachers this way? Not only is it incredibly unfair for you to keep money which isn't yours, it just doesn't make sense for the well-being of not just the Adelanto Elementary School District, but for the students under your care. If a teacher's too busy worrying about how they're going to pay their rent, then they'll be too busy to educate your students. Again, I ask you to do not just the right thing, but the logical thing for your district, your teachers, and your students. Thank you.
The board calls Alexis de Jesus. Is Alexis de Jesus.
Good evening. My name is Alexis de Jesus and I am a
Good evening. My name is Alexis De Jesus and I am a par educator at a special education preschool in the Apple Valley School District. And I am here to support all educators and support staff in the Adelanto Elementary School District who are being underpaid and treated unfairly by the district. Educators and their support staff, which include bus drivers, paraprofessionals, cafeteria workers, interpreters, mechanics, groundsmen, and more deserve respect and living wages. When we think about our schools, their staff, and our students, we should feel no concern or fear about their safety, their well-being, and their education. We want these future generations to thrive. And in order for that to happen, educators and their support staff need the necessary resources and support from their district. And that starts with respect and fair wages. These educators and their staff do not deserve to have to come here year after year to beg their district for respect and livable wages. Students do not deserve unsafe schools, large class sizes, and inconsistency in their educations. Sorry. Because their district will not give their staff fair wages or respect, causing them to leave after only a few years. We need educators and staff who genuinely care about our students to stay in our schools and district, not be forced to leave because our district refuses to treat them fairly. I stand with the Adelanto Detention, or, oh my gosh. I stand with the Adelanto District Teachers Association and California School Employee Association. And I implore you, the school board, to do the same.
Madam President, the board calls Dawn Fernandez.
Good evening colleagues and good evening Board. My name is Dawn Cummings Fernandez. I've been employed as a teacher with the district for 17 years. Prior to that, I was a paraprofessional in the district and lunch lady with the district. So have lots of experience with this school district. Actually, I was a lunch lady with Ms. Holly Echus. So my first day working with her, rest in peace Holly. I wanted to tell you about my favorite part of the day as a teacher. My favorite part of the day as a teacher is I start my day out as the crossing guard at my school. The reason this is the favorite part of the day for me is I get to see the parents bring their students to school. And not just parents, grandparents, aunts, uncles, brothers, sisters, bring their students to school and wish them a happy day. Give them hugs, kisses. Many of them, give them the heart sign as they're getting out of the car and they send them off into our hands. And it's the biggest reminder to me as a teacher that they are their precious gift. Their most valuable thing they own in the world. It reminds me that I need to do my very best job every single day. It humbles me and reminds me that I need to do the very best I can because they are bringing their very best child to school every single day, whether they are challenged academically, whether they have challenging behavior, whether they are challenged emotionally. It reminds me that they are the very best that that parent is bringing. And they are the most valuable and treasured gift that, that that parent has. And I need to take care of them and do my best. And it energizes me. I love it. It energizes me. But you know what the worst part of my job is? The very worst that drains me of my ever essence every year, repeatedly every year, that I have to beg and grovel. Beg and grovel on my hands and knees, it feels like, for what I am worth. What I am worth. What my value is, when I know what my value is. And I will never leave Adelanto School District because it is my community. It's where I live. It's where I play. It's where I see my students every day, not just at school, but in the community, at the store, at the church, at the park, where I live, where I live and breathe. It's what I do. I'll never leave, but I am not ever showed value for who I am and what I do. Start showing us some value, not just by saying, "Good job. Happy Teacher Appreciation Day." Happy Lunch Lady Day. Happy Classified Appreciation Day. That is not showing us value for what we do because we value our students as those prized possessions, not just as what the parents have, but as a community. They are our prized possessions and we want the very best for them. Thank you.
Madam President, that does it for the golden rods. I do have people on Zoom, but you have already reached your 20 minutes. What is the consensus of the board? Fifteen. We need to take a vote.
Madam President, I feel we should allow the speakers to speak and give them for the sake of time, give, uh, give them the group at least 15 minutes to speak, since we have 15 speakers. Twenty minutes. We, we did reach already our 20 minutes for public comment, so.
I second that. Twenty minutes.
I'm fine with an extra twen- twenty. Okay, twenty.
Consensus, 20 minutes extra. Okay. Okay, the board calls Kelly Martinez.
All I see on Zoom is a Kelly and a Teresa Martinez. If this is Kelly Martinez, please raise your hand. No. Oh, I got a thumbs up. I'll unmute them now. You may unmute now.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, I was talking away. All right. So I've lived in the Adelanto area for 31 years. I work at TedVic and I've been in the school district for 15 years. I'm speaking with you folks today concerning cancer policies, basically, and how we depend on those when you're a cancer patient like I, I was two years ago. And because of the lack of being able to afford this now because of our raising of our medical insurance, not getting a pay increase, and also not, not knowing exactly how I'm going to do all this. And I know I'm not the only one in the district who is suffering or has needs that require these services from American Fidelity. I have several cancel policy, policies because I have to have riders that go with them in order to have the care that I had. Two years ago, I finished my treatment, but that does not end our journey. I know that there's people right now in the Adelanto School District that are facing the same kind of crisis that my family went through. Had it not been for these policies that I had and still have with American Fidelity and the monies that they provided during my treatment for almost missing school for a whole year, I would have lost my house. We would have lost our vehicles. We could have been homeless. But because of those policies that were able to give me the monies that we needed to help me through this terrible time, I was able to keep all. But now when I'm told that it is going to be going up several hundred dollars, another 400, I, is what I heard. I'm trying to figure out how and what policies I'm going to be able to keep to continue my journey with this. And I know there's people going through treatment right now that are facing the same kind of things. And I think it's so unfair for them to even have to worry about this. I think everybody in the audience, as well as you folks that are sitting there, have had some people in your life be touched by this awful disease. It knows no boundaries. Could be somebody's child. It could be your husband. It could be your wife. It could be your siblings. It could be you. And the last thing that we need to worry about is how are we going to make it through that? So you all need to think about that as well. When you're thinking about cost of living increases, monies that we're going to have to need to pay for our, our healthcare. It's ridiculous. Maybe if I print out what I make and I hand it to you folks, you guys can show me which ones I should get rid of and which ones I should keep and what I can afford. I make $2,900 a month after taxes and my deductions right now are $840. And I don't really like having to open up everything that's private to me, but I think it's necessary just so you guys can understand what we face. Those are real numbers. So I hope you guys think about that. Thank you.
The board calls Maria Corona.
Hello, my name is Maria Corona and I'm a parent volunteer at Gus Franklin. I have a fourth and fifth grader who attend Gus Franklin and a seventh grader who attends Melva Davis. All three started at Gus since TK. I also have a son who is a senior in high school and today was his last baseball game of the season and I missed it, thanks to all of you sitting there. I am here to show my support to all the teachers, especially my children's current and previous teachers. That's how much I care and appreciate them. It was a hard decision that I made to miss my son's game, but I want you to see that these teachers have made a difference in my children's lives. That is why I made the decision to come. I became a parent volunteer in September and from day one, I felt the support from the teachers. They have helped and support, support us all year long. When they volunteer their time for school events like festivals, spelling bee, young authors, science camp, they aren't getting paid and it's beyond the teacher's contractual time. And they do those things to give their students the best education and experiences possible. I have a good relationship with my children's current and previous teachers. We have worked together as a team to help my kids succeed. My daughter's teacher is Mrs. Senna. She goes above and beyond the call of duty. My daughter will send her messages after school and she always replies, "Mrs. Senna helped me put a flyer together while she was homesick." My daughter was sick last week and I asked Mrs. Senna if she had any makeup work for my daughter to do over the weekend. And she put a packet together for her with detailed instructions on what to do. I am pretty sure she got that ready for me during her break. And this is the packet she gave me with detailed, step by step what to do. It breaks my heart to see Mrs. Senna and Mr. Everhart, along with the other teachers at Gus Franklin, not being appreciated for all that they're, they do for their students. Mr. Everhart also goes above and beyond. He would open his classroom before school starts for students who need help or for them to finish their work. They have done more great things that would take me hours, but I don't have enough time. I have many more stories just like this with my kids' previous teachers. So I am begging you to please settle the contract with the teachers this week so they can go back to teaching my children. And please do not make all of us lose out on more important family events and times just because you want to hold on to the money for who knows what. Because we will keep coming until you settle the contract. Because, because all you are doing is making the students see that you don't care about their education by treating their teachers unfairly. Thank you.
The board calls Charlene Trujillo.
Hi, my name is Charlene Trujillo. I am here to talk about why teachers should get raised. Teachers spend time at school, working and also working at home. They, they can be spending time with loved ones, but they spend time with, but they spend their time teaching students. Teachers spend their own money on, on their students, like pens, pencils. You could give the teachers money to spend on the students instead of them having to spend their own money. But no, you want to spend it on your own needs. Because so far we could see that the money isn't used on the teachers or on the supplies needed at school. For me being a student, we care to make sure that we have a outstanding education. We can only get that by the great teachers in my school. If you don't give the teachers what they are asking for, they may leave and we are all going to miss out on great teachers that, that care about us. My, my education is in your hands. Please settle the contract with the teachers.
The board calls Jose Trujillo.
Hi, my name is Jose Trujillo and I am a fifth grader at Gus Franklin. I believe that teachers should get paid more because without them, the school district would not exist. I am afraid that if you don't settle the contract with the teachers, they will get a job at another district and that will affect my education. My teacher is Mr. Everhart and he is a great teacher. He puts his time and effort to teach me and my classmates. I am very upset that he isn't getting paid what he is worth. Mr. Everhart is teaching us six and seventh grade math to get us ready for middle school. And thanks to Mr. Everhart, I am at an eighth grade math level and I am at an above grade level standard. So I am asking you guys to settle the contract this week so that they don't leave us and go to another district. I also want you to know that the teachers spend their own money on their students. They don't have to, but they do because, because they care about us. That is why I am here, because I care about them. Thank you. And please show us that you care about us to, to, by giving the teachers what they are asking for.
The board calls Melissa Ochoa.
I'm asking them to unmute now.
Hi, good evening. My name is Melissa Ochoa. I am a previous student who went through the High Desert School District and I'm speaking out in support of our Adelanto School District teachers, faculty, and staff. I'm urging the elected leaders for the Board of Education to disperse and distribute the funds that have been accumulated by the COLA fund that they rightfully deserve. You cannot continue to wonder why the High Desert lacks quality educators and staff when the district has refused to provide them the proper funds and resources in order to support them. If you truly cared about your educators and teachers like you so claim, you would absolutely do more. These people should not be scrambling to get by by doing something that they absolutely love. Teachers are constantly underappreciated as laborers, as educators, as the people who are shaping the young minds of today. As today as well, we are in a crisis. There's a lack of educators all around the country, not just in California because of this very issue. And we have seen what happens whenever we invest in our children's education. Their critical skills such as reading and writing improve drastically and children are excited to learn and to go to school. So now is the time to start investing in our students, in our educators, knowing that the city of Atlanta has a lot of potential for more development. We know that. So let's start taking our educators into consideration when we're discussing the growth of this city. Educators also deserve access to these funds in order to avoid having to pay out of pocket for everyday supplies in school. A few students have already spoken up and given you examples of how these educators have gone out of their way and taken money out of their own paycheck in order to pay for everyday supplies in the classroom, which despite what you may think is not very cheap. The accumulation of all these quickly add up, especially considering how much the cost of living has gone up without also adjusting how much they're getting paid. So hearing that some of these students are speaking out for their educators in order for them to get paid is absolutely heartbreaking. But on a final note, I thank you, I thank you for your time and I greatly appreciate it. Thank you so much.
The board calls Cynthia Rodriguez. The board calls Cynthia Rodriguez.
I am asking them to unmute now. Cynthia, you may unmute.
Good evening. My name is Cynthia Rodriguez and I am a paraprofessional at Gus Franklin. I've been with the district for eighteen years and I love my job. At the last board meeting, I spoke about how I felt disrespected by the district's negotiations with CCA and ADTA. I talked about how the district, um, offered classified a zero and increase of salary. I talked about how the district would put us in negative numbers by offering us nothing and increasing our Kaiser Health Insurance to two hundred and sixty dollars and four hundred dollars for Aetna members. I also mentioned how the district gives certain twelve-month employees seven thousand dollars a year to opt out of health insurance, while classified is only given five hundred dollars a year. Well, I hope the board members did their homework and looked deeper into these concerns. I really hope that the board got to see how unfair the district has been during CCA and ADTA negotiations. After placing Mr. Kraus on administrative leave, it really just leads us to more questions and leads us to raise more concern. The district has not been transparent to employees and has not been transparent to the members of this community. The last negotiation update I seen on AESD website was from March thirteenth. Parents and members of the community have the right to know what's going on. Without no superintendent, there is no leadership. There is no one to oversee policy implementation and no one to maintain financial resources to support the organization. I hope that the district was honest and transparent during the mediation and fact-finding process and the meeting with ADTA. Like I mentioned before, we stand with our teachers and we will not be divided. Give us what we deserve. That money is ours. We want our money and we don't want it now. We want it yesterday. Thank you.
The board now calls Chris Ochoa.
They are on Zoom and I am asking them to unmute now. Chris, you may unmute now.
Hello, thank you. Uh, and hello to everyone there at the school board. I just want to say that I am in full support of the teachers and support staff at Adelanto. It's a travesty that they're being treated this way. As someone who's running for an elected position, I would hope that the elected officials of this board will step into their roles, protect the teachers and support staff and side with the people who are molding the future generations of our communities, invest in our students and specifically make sure that those, that, that the COLA funding is used in a responsible way that is going to benefit the employees of the Adelanto Elementary School District and support our future generations. We know we have a lot of changes coming to our High Desert community and we need to make sure that we're protecting our future and our children are our future. And I've heard a lot of talk today and it was reiterated about teacher appreciation and staff appreciation. So I'm just going to be very blunt because that's the type of person I am. Let's put our money where our mouth is and get the work done for our educators. Thank you. I yield back the time.
The board calls Soy Madre.
I do not see anybody on Zoom by Soy Madre or Madre and Leve that they have.
The board calls Max Goldberg.
I do see Max on Zoom and I am asking them to unmute now. Max, you may unmute now.
Hi, I'm Max Goldberg. I'm a concerned parent calling in support of the COLA funds being allocated to Adelanto's amazing teachers. The way we treat our teachers sends a message to future educators about what they can expect from a career in teaching in Adelanto. If we continue to neglect the financial and professional needs of our teachers, how can we expect bright, passionate individuals to enter this profession and stay in Adelanto? It's disheartening to see so many dedicated teachers, some on this call, who are leaving our district for better opportunities elsewhere. Every time a teacher departs, our students lose a potential role model, a guide and an advocate. It very straightforwardly makes Adelanto a worse place to live. We must stop the exodus by making Adelanto a district where educators feel valued and fairly compensated. Neighboring districts are making significant strides in supporting their teachers. Some of those numbers were discussed earlier. This disparity is not just troubling, it puts Adelanto at a competitive disadvantage when it comes to attracting and retaining teaching talent. I urge the school district to allocate the COLA funds as intended directly to our teachers and staff. This is not just an investment in their welfare, it's an investment in the quality of education in Adelanto. Better compensation leads to more satisfied, engaged and effective teachers, which in turn results in better outcomes for our students. Teachers don't need an appreciation week. They need one moment every two weeks and it's called a fair, generous payday. Do the right thing, pay our teachers. I yield back my time.
Madam President, that does it for a closed session. You know what? She, she filled out a form, but it just said Gus Franklin. So that's why it was, it didn't state why. So, um, Tabitha Brown?
Hello, my name is Tabitha Brown. I am a volunteer parent at Gus Franklin. Here are some of the other volunteer parents. It breaks my heart to hear what these people are saying that is happening to them. I am not from Adelanto School District. I took my children out of that district that I did not like, that I did not care about my children. I have a third grader, my daughter Elizabeth. She started off at Gus Franklin five months ago. When I brought her to the school, my baby was reading at a kindergarten level. At her last school, those kids made fun of my baby. They made fun of her. She didn't want to be at school anymore. So I brought her to Gus Franklin. And in those five months, my baby is reading at second grade level. There is no way that these, these women and men should have to be doing this. I have a kindergartner. Her teacher is Ms. Cabin. She teaches kindergarten, but she's teaching my baby first grade level. My baby knows how to read. My daughter, my kindergartner and my third grader were reading together in the beginning and my third grader was sad like, how come my sister know how to read better than me? And I have to sit there and tell her, I'm sorry, it's going to get better. And I need you guys to support them. Please, please help them because I don't want my children to lose out from here and their, and in their future to teachers due to something like money. It grow on trees every day. It is, it is, it's being printed out. It's coming out. Please don't hold this many like y'all giving them y'all paycheck. Okay, please don't do that to them. I know some of y'all have children, grandchildren. Y'all want the best for them. I took the time to come here with my children. I should be at home doing dinner. I have a one-year-old at home right now that I left. I still volunteer my time to try my best to find somebody. I have to pay somebody to watch my one-year-old so I can go work for free at Gus Franklin, just so we can make it easier for all these children. I'm not even a teacher there, but when them kids see me, hi Elizabeth's mom, hi Nora's mom, just, and that's for free. These teachers, they do this every day. I see these teachers the past few weeks standing in front of that school holding up signs and it's cold. They, it, it's crazy. Adelanto is not the best area. I'm going to tell you, people kept telling me, don't tell, don't send your kids over there. But I did it anyways. And when I went, I am proud. I am glad that I brought my daughters and my future one-year-old to come to this school, Gus Franklin, because of these women and these men. And they will back my kids up even for free on their own time. So please don't do them like that. I'm crying to you guys. They begging y'all, but I'm crying to y'all. Please give these people what they need. Please support them because we need them. We, as parents, we trust them and you guys to make it right for our children. I'm blessed to be able to be a stay-at-home mom. Don't get me wrong, I am blessed, but I still struggle. But to support my children, to make sure I'm there, I attend every single meeting, every, every function that I can for my children. Because I want these people to know, I, you got my support. I'll go pay for a babysitter. You have my support. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Please, please do it right. Please end this now. Thank you.
Thank you. The time is now seven thirty-one. Recession to closed session. Zee, may I get a motion? Our trustees, can I get a motion, please?
Bens, I mo- motion to move, move to close sess- session.
Soto, all second time motion.
Ms. Leve, please take the vote. Trustee Soto.
Soto, I.
Trustee Webster. I'm sorry. Trustee Turner.
Turner, I.
Trustee Bens.
Bens, I.
Trustee LaFringe. LaFringe, I. Motion passed for zero. We're now headed to closed session. Thank you.
Madam President, I just want to say that trustee Soto did join us at five thirty-four PM.
Thank you. Open session. The time is nine twenty-two.
Ms. Leve, will you please call roll?
I'll call roll call. Uh, trustee Bens.
Pre- present.
Uh, trustee Turner is present, correct?
Yes, she is. She's still, still in the closed session.
Trustee Soto.
Soto, present.
Trustee LaFringe. LaFringe, present. Um, form is established. I'd like to make a, um.
We, um, I, I'd like to make a mo- motion to, to extend the meet, meet, meeting. Uh, no later than ten thirty? This is say eleven, just in case. Hopefully not.
Okay. And I need a second.
Soto, all second.
Ms. Leve, please take the vote.
Trustee Soto.
Soto, I.
Trustee Turn- Turner, well Turner. Trustee Bens.
Bens, I.
Trustee LaFringe. LaFringe, I. Motion passed. Three zero.
That is correct.
Nine twenty-three, we're back in.
Okay, uh, trustee Bens, I mo- motion to return to closed sess- session.
Soto, all second.
I'll take the vote. Trustee Soto.
Soto, yes.
Trustee Bens.
Bens, I.
Trustee LaFringe. LaFringe, I. Motion passed three zero. We're back in closed session.
Time is nine twenty-three. Sorry.
Welcome back, everyone. We convene to open session. Ms. Leve, please call, call the order.
Madam President, the time is nine fifty-seven and I will go ahead and I'll take roll call. Trustee Bens.
Pre- present.
Trustee Turner.
Turner, present.
Trustee Soto.
Soto, present.
Trustee LaFringe. LaFringe, present. Form has been established. Um, section nine, closed sessions report. Currently, we have nothing to report out on public testimony. Ms. Leve, do we have anyone from ADTA?
I will go ahead and see if, um, Jennifer Rader is online.
Yes, we are asking her to unmute now. Ms. Rader, you may unmute now. No response.
Calling on Diane Lynn from CCA.
She is on Zoom and I am asking them to unmute now.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, I have nothing more to say. I, I said all that I needed to say, um, during, before closed session. Um, all I can say is have a good evening and thank you.
We also have on Zoom land, Luis Ibarra.
I do not have a Luis Ibarra. I have a Sikoro Ibarra. I do not know if that's the same person. If it is, could you please raise your hand? No response.
Madam President, that's all I have.
I do have a hand up, never mind.
Okay.
Asking them to unmute now.
Mr. Sinatra, are they on?
They are on. Their hand is raised and I have asked them to unmute, but they have not yet unmuted. I see they are unmuted, uh. Sikoro Ibarra, are you there?
Yes, hi.
Ms. Ibarra, go ahead.
Um, no, I have nothing to say. I'm just present to hear what you guys, um, have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving right along. Let's move on to, uh, section eleven, adoption of the minutes. Trustees, I need a motion to approve as, as written and order field regular board meeting minutes of April the ninth, twenty twenty-four.
Bens, I mo- motion to, to approve the, um, the min- minutes.
Soto, all second time motion.
Ms. Leve, please take the vote. Trustee Soto.
Soto, I.
Trustee what, um, Turner.
Turner, I.
Trustee Bens.
Bens, I.
Trustee LaFringe. LaFringe, I. Motion passed for zero. Moving on to section twelve, consent agenda. We'll be taking items twelve point zero two through twelve point twenty-five. Does any trustee want to pull an item? Hearing none, Ms. Leve, can we have, I mean, can we have a motion to approve the consent as in the, please?
Motion that we approve.
Turner, second.
Ms. Leve, please take the vote. Trustee Soto.
Soto, I.
Trustee Turner.
Turner, I.
Trustee Bens.
Bens, I.
Trustee LaFringe. LaFringe, I. Motion passed four zero. Moving along to fourteen, new business, fourteen zero one. Trustees, I need a motion to approve the acceptance of the um, fiscal year twenty twenty-two slash twenty-three annual audit report.
Bens, I mo- motion to, to approve.
Soto, all second.
We're open for discussion. I'm sorry. I will slip blank right now.
Um, I would like to, uh, say something that even though we're approving this because we have to approve it tonight. I would like to say something that, even though we're approving this because we have to approve it tonight, Ms. Gonzalez, could you talk about the next step with the audit?
Yes, thank you. So what we're gonna do is, of course, we're reviewing all of the additional audit findings. We're going to, we already provided statements to our auditors on how we're going to mitigate the findings for next year and the processes that we're putting in place. In addition, if the trustees would like, we could have our auditor come at our next board meeting to present and provide any additional statements to answer any questions that you may have.
I would appreciate, and also I think it would be good for us to have a workshop on the audit so that as you go along and put the systems in place, we can review those and avoid things that may come up in the future, because we do want our books to be straight and for things to be right so that we're not having, you know, things that are, findings that are coming up. And I really do look forward in seeing how we can have the checks and balances so that we are transparent, things are clear, and we are right in the books.
Yes, and as we move into ending this year and building our adopted budget for next year, we can definitely come together also for committee oversight workshops to provide those learning pieces and input as well.
Okay, thank you.
I completely agree with trustee Bens. 16 discrepancies, deficiencies.
That's for two years.
For both years, correct. It's a lot, in my view. So I think having a workshop is gonna be helpful for the board, for the public. I have a lot of questions, but due to the time, I think the workshop will help answer those questions.
And that we follow through throughout the year, not just leave, you know. It's like, okay, it's done, and we go on. To keep touching back on this would be good for the board and for the public.
Yes, I agree. Totally agree.
That we can do.
All right.
Any further discussion? Ms. Lave, please take the vote.
So just for clarification, I do have Bens first and then second by Soto, and this is to accept, correct?
To approve, yes.
Okay, great. I'll go ahead and I'll take. Oh, Soto?
Soto, yes.
Turner?
Turner, I.
Trustee Bens?
Bens, I.
Trustee LaFringe.
LaFringe, I. Motion passed four zero. Section 14.02, trustees, I need a motion for the approval of resolution number 23.24.33 to authorize Adelanto Elementary School District to receive the individual retirement annuity from Ms. Victoria McGathen as a donation to George Visual and Performing Arts Magnet School.
A motion that we accept.
Turner, I, second.
We're open for discussion.
Wow, thank you. Thank you so much for the donation. We really do appreciate it as a district. I was at the Victoria McGathen, life celebration of life, and it's just, it's a different vibe and feeling and atmosphere when you're celebrating someone's life. So I just want to thank the family for the donation.
I concur. Victoria McGathen, she was first a teacher at George Visual and Performing Arts before she retired. And then she, of course, got the namesake school named after her. So I agree. It's quite a generous gift, you know, for the students that she served, the employees that she mentored. And, you know, it was just a wonderful occasion. So thanks again to the family.
I concur. Thank you. Ms. Lave, will you please call for the vote?
Trustee Soto.
Soto, I.
Trustee Turner.
Turner, I.
Trustee Ben.
Bens, I.
Trustee LaFringe.
LaFringe, I. Motion passed four zero. 15, policy introductions, updates, and readings, 15.01. Trustees, I need a motion to approve and adopt the first revision of board policy 6142.6, visual and performing arts education.
Bens, I motion to approve.
Soto, all second down motion.
Open for discussion. Hearing none, Ms. Lave, please take the vote.
Trustee Soto.
Soto, I.
Trustee Turner.
Turner, I.
Trustee Bens.
Bens, I.
Trustee LaFringe.
LaFringe, I. Motion passed four zero. 15.02, trustees, I need a motion to approve and adopt second read board policy 5111, admission.
Soto, I move that we approve.
Bens, I second.
We're open for a discussion.
Yes, I'm very glad that we are actually included under the verification of admission eligibility. We included the immunizations part of 1502. One of our deficiencies in the audit was that one of our students went to school without getting his immunizations up to date. So the fact that this is on our board policy now is gonna be helpful to ensure that we do not have another audit deficiency. So I'm glad that we have included that language in there.
Ms. Lave, please take the votes.
Trustee Soto.
Soto, I.
Trustee Turner.
Turner, I.
Trustee Bens.
Bens, I.
Trustee LaFringe.
LaFringe, I. Motion passed four zero. Section 15.03, trustees, I need a motion to approve and adopt the second read administrative regulation 5111, admission.
Turner, motion to approve.
Bens, I second.
We're open for a discussion. Hearing none, Ms. Lave, please take the vote.
Trustee Soto.
Soto, I.
Trustee Turner.
Turner, I.
Trustee Bens.
Bens, I.
Trustee LaFringe.
LaFringe, I. Motion passed four zero. Section 15.04, trustees, I need a motion to approve and adopt the second read board policy 6170.1.1, transitional kindergarten.
Turner, motion to approve.
Soto, all second.
We're open for discussion. Hearing none, Ms. Lave, please take the vote.
Trustee Soto.
Soto, I.
Trustee Turner.
Turner, I.
Trustee Bens.
Bens, I.
Trustee LaFringe.
LaFringe, I. Motion passed four zero. Section 16, governing board members' reports and announcements, 16.01. Governing board members' reports and announcement, if anyone likes to.
In the interest of time, I'll save my comments for another night.
I do have a few things I'd like to report. I'd just like to, but I'd like to end up just with this one note. I'll be reporting out next meeting what I've been doing as a trustee. I'd just like to send a message to the community, to our staff members, to our district employees, to our teachers. Just hang in there. We're gonna get through this. We're going through a rough patch right now as a district, but I just want to ensure that the community, I want to ensure you, that we are working very diligently, digitally, excuse me, very hard to make sure that this district is running to the best of its ability, to its best ability as possible. So just hang in there, and I'll be reporting out next week a little bit more about what I've been doing in our community. Have a good night, everyone.
Thank you, trustee Soto. I concur with that. Due to time, I will hold my comments to the next board meeting.
Okay, I have a few things I'd like to say. I'd like to express my deep gratitude to the cabinet for their swift response last Tuesday at Mesa Linda, which was instrumental in providing extra support on site. I extend my heartfelt thanks to all the cabinet members, extra campus supervision, extra certified, certificated substitutes, law enforcement, and Blue Knight security for their efforts in ensuring that the day went without any incident. I take pride in congratulating the students who participated in and excelled at the county science fair. I also welcome back the students who represented us in Sacramento last week. Welcome back. I want to take this opportunity to show my appreciation to the school bus drivers for their tireless efforts in transporting our students safely to and from school. Thank you to each one of you for your services for School Nutrition Employee Week, which is from April the 29th through May the 3rd. I want to thank you for the contribution to the school's community. School nurses is on May the 8th. We appreciate all that you do, and thank you for your dedication as well for our teachers. We know that California Day of the Teachers is also on May the 8th. We appreciate all the teachers, and thank you for your hard work. For our Classified Employee Week on May the 19th. I want to thank all of the classified employees for contributing to our vision of becoming the High Desert Premier Learning Establishment. And I like to say thank you, and I hope that everyone have a safe drive home if you're driving, or thank you out in Zoom land. Thank you. We appreciate you coming. Section 17, adjournment. Trustees, can I get a motion to adjourn?
A motion that we adjourn?
Bens, I second.
Any discussion? I'm kidding.
I'll take the vote. Trustee Soto.
Soto, I.
Trustee Turner.
Turner, I.
Trustee Bens.
Bens, I.
Trustee LaFringe.
LaFringe, I. Motion passed four zero. We have adjourned, and the time is 10:16. Thank you.